Good afternoon, everybody, and wish you all a happy new year. I'm sure we can make you happy the best we can, it certainly will be different, or last year changed and just moving on a bit. Have any apologies, Paul?
Chair, I've not received any apologies for today's meeting, if there's any others from other contributors, please.
Anybody got any apologies that we're aware of? In which case, no, thank you very much. We're very busy, so we'll move forward, just remind everybody, we are a public meeting today and we are recording and webcasting. So just to be aware of that, that is the way we're operating today. We will close at the end of the meeting and have five confidential minutes if anybody has anything they need to ask that we can't do in the in the public meeting. So we'll move straight on with the agenda and ask Shade to give us our national and regional update and whether, Shade, you want to do the local position at the same time, whichever suits yourself.
Yes, thank you, Chair, I'll do both at the same time. A lot of what I was going to say has been overtaken by lockdown. So we do know that numbers have been going up, yesterday had the largest daily case numbers reported nationally at 58,784. And Warwickshire had an additional 492 cases reported yesterday. Almost all areas across the country are above 200 per 100,000 and some areas in London and the South East are up to 900 per 100,000 population. There is higher positivity overall and the highest positivity is in the age group 10 to 19 years. We're seeing bigger increases in rural areas, which is a bit surprising because they've been able to maintain very low numbers up until recently. So places like Shropshire and Herefordshire are starting to see real uptick in numbers. Across the West Midlands, Birmingham and Black Country have the highest cases. In Warwickshire, we will be covering the EPE in more detail in a minute, but Rugby had the highest case numbers. And we were really worried about Rugby, but since Rugby has now come down, overall our numbers in Warwickshire have gone up, positivity has gone up and over 60s case risk has also gone up. I'm hoping that with lockdown, numbers will start to come down in a few weeks. Our priority now is to support businesses that are open, care homes and schools, especially for the schools' testing programme. So in terms of testing, just a quick update, we now have, as of today, five sites open for community testing, North Warwickshire, Water Otting, Bedworth, Nun Eaton, Warwick and now Rugby opening up today, soft lunch, soft lunch yesterday, today opening up. Stratford is starting next week. We currently have capacity to do about 15,000 tests across all six sites per week and many of the sites are running at full capacity. Demand for tests remain very, very good. Something that's come online in the last couple of hours as well since the announcements of lockdown is what's going to happen to community testing with lockdown, the context of the current lockdown. Bearing in mind that many essential shops are still open and staff of these shops may continue to be tested, so we're still seeking clarity on that. And the DSVH's position across the West Midlands is that testing, asymptomatic testing should continue, especially for those that are key workers or working in, I mean, they are not able to work from home. Till date, we've completed about 18,000 tests and positivity is currently at about 1.12%, that's equivalent to about 193 positive tests. So that's a brief summary of where we are in terms of testing locally.
Any questions or queries for Shade? Margaret?
Thanks. You're on move. Yeah, it's all right, it's come off now. Shade, is it possible to say an estimate of how many people in England or the UK have actually had the virus? I mean, you will have a record of the ones registered, but is there an estimate of the people who don't know they've had it? I know that's quite difficult, it's just interesting to know what proportion of the population have so far had it, can we make any sort of estimate for that?
I don't think so, I don't think we have that estimate, you mean in terms of asymptomatic people that have had?
No, everybody, people who you know about who've had it or have already got it, and people who you might estimate have had it but don't know. Just so we know what proportion of the population might have antibodies, basically.
We have prevalence estimates, which are, because case numbers, I see where you're coming from, case numbers only tell you people that have tested positive. And there will be some people who've had it, don't go for a test, recover from it. And a large proportion of people who will have it and will not even have symptoms. But we have prevalence estimates that tell us what sort of range they think the prevalence is. And before lockdown, around November to December, the national prevalence was about, I think, 2% to 3%, was the estimate. I don't know what it is now, I would imagine it's probably gone up now, the estimated prevalence. And prevalence is modeled on the basis of number of people going into hospital and number of deaths. So they use those two parameters to work out what the estimated prevalence is and the various per area. It's difficult to say now, I can definitely find out because PHE gave us those figures sometime in November, December, I can find out exactly what we think the prevalence is now at the moment.
Yeah, thanks, it would just be interesting. And sorry, while I'm speaking, what's happening to the school testing now that the schools aren't in?
So the information we've been given is that school testing will go ahead as planned. So schools are still gearing up to start testing, especially now that the numbers have reduced. We're thinking is that with lockdown, numbers of students will be tested, it will be lower, numbers of staff, it will be easier for them to manage to process. So school testing is still going ahead.
Is that for children, you know, under 16s and things as well?
Second of all, testing will still go ahead, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Shade, I've got Jackie Chambers, I think it is, Nigel Minns and then Marion. Jackie?
I just wanted to ask Shade in terms of the numbers of positive cases that she cited, which I understood was 196 from this community testing. Was that positive in terms of lateral flow tests or positives that were proven to be positive through the PCR test? And what proportion of people are actually going through to have their positive LFTs confirmed by the PCR tests?
So the data we currently have are positives, the ones that, the one I reported is positive from the lateral flow testing. I do not have the data to hand as to how many have subsequently tested positive via PCR testing.
So Chairman, we have no understanding then of how many of these cases are false positives?
It doesn't mean that we don't have it. So I can certainly find out from DHSE because we don't own the data, the data is owned by DHSE, we can find out from them. A positive test triggers off the DHSE notification that triggers off contact tracing. And we, the LFT testing, community testing, that ends, that bit of it ends with us. We don't know exactly what happens and how that is reported onwards. We do know that number of positive tests are subsequently captured in numbers that are reported as part of our case numbers. So if we have 492 positive tests, for example, in Warwickshire, some of that will have been initial LFT that have subsequently had a PCR testing. Well, that exact breakdown is something that we're still asking, so the fact that I said we don't have it yet, it doesn't mean that the data is not available.
Okay, thank you, Jackie, Nigel Minns.
Thanks, Les, and happy to hear everyone. Just a suggestion really, and I don't know if this is possible or not. But I wonder if in answer to Margaret's question, the ONS data surveys that have gone through every period. Insight may be able to do as an analysis of those in terms of how many people have actually had it at any wrong time, rather than how many have currently got it. So it's certainly a question we can ask Insight to see if they can do that calculation.
That's great, thank you, thank you Nigel, that's good, Marion?
Thank you, Chair. Shade, I know you've covered this with Margaret about the schoolchildren, but there's so many children that aren't at school at the moment, I just wondered how that would be managed?
She meant in terms of testing?
Yes, sorry, yes, with the, you know, the immunisation and everything like that, the testing. I mean, you know, we've got hundreds of children now not at school. How is, how is that all going to be managed at the moment? Because you're asking them to stay off school and not mix. And then if they're all going to mix to go and have tests, I've just, you know, I've got parents already on the phone to me. Asking me what's going on and how things are going to be managed. And I would just like to be able to say that I've spoken to you and I have an answer. And then I'm not giving any answers, I say I know somebody who can give me the answer.
So my answer would be, first of all, a disclaimer, the Schools' Testing Programme is led by the EPE. We've asked to be involved and I am involved in terms of keeping on top of what's going on and making sure that the Community Testing Programme aligns. And any learning from community testing can be transferred into schools' testing. My thinking is that lockdown means that the numbers of people of children, secondary school children that will be tested has drastically reduced. It is still open to children of key workers, vulnerable children, and they will be the ones that will be offered the testing, especially their contacts of a positive case. Teachers and staff will be offered testing. I do not think that children that are at home will be offered testing. But again, that is something that I will need to clarify because I'm just, just thinking through it. I'm not sure what the rationale would be for offering somebody who's already at home and testing from the school-based programme. If they choose to take advantage of community-based testing whilst they are at home, that's a different matter. But the rationale behind school testing is to reduce the number of children that are sent home because their contacts or entire bubbles being sent home. If lockdown has removed the need for that, I do not believe that children at home will be offered testing as part of the School Testing Programme.
Okay, okay. I can say the person said, thank you so much.
Thanks, Marion, Judy?
I'm quite concerned about the staffing of all these centres. Are we managing to keep our staffing levels up? I'm concerned about fatigue because, you know, it's very full-on. And now we've got people also having to do vaccinations as well. So are we maintaining our staffing levels and are they able to take a break?
It's a concern for us as well, but till date, we have managed to keep that. We've used a mix of, I mean, the setting of community testing centres have been partnership working between WCC and each of the relevant district or borough councils. And then we visit a lot of per temp staff. And till date, that has worked really well. Going into the future, especially with schools' testing coming on board and the significant resource requirement that that will need. I've been told that over 700 additional staff will be needed to set up schools' testing across secondary schools in Warwickshire. I'm not sure what the future will mean in terms of recent staffing, resource, staffing capacity. But for now, in terms of community testing, we have the staff in place to carry out the tests and run the test sites.
Is that okay, Judy? Thank you. Have you anything else to add, Shade, is that your report?
That's it, yeah.
Are you able to give us any update, because I'm getting it, on vaccinations? Although it's not our remit, it's the CCGs and certainly the CCG are coming to the Health Wellbeing Board tomorrow to give us an update, I didn't know.
Yeah, so we've asked that question today. And I think Godan has given me an update, PCN vaccination hubs. Just waiting for my computer to load up. Yeah, so additional PCN hubs in Warwickshire, there's two in the south, Hastings House and Studley Village Hall. And there will be an additional eight next week with no names given. They have done 19,000 vaccinations this week and they expect to do 24,000 next week. Priority groups remain nursing homes and people over the age of 80.
That's lovely, Adrian, you indicated as well.
Although Shade has covered most, just a quick update from the bits I know. So we've got, we've now got three hospital hubs up and running, so we had the original UHCW, which was going with the Pfizer vaccine. Both George Elliot and Swift started yesterday with the Oxford AstraZeneca one and Seaboo PT hopefully start at the end of this week. I think Shade covered the local vaccination centres, so we've got eight running at the minute. We should have another four by the end of this week, taking just a 12 in Tovey Croft, Coventry, Warwick. And then eight more next week hopefully, but that's still need sign off with the national team, subject to vaccine supply, et cetera. The care home model's up and running, so we've got a mixture of roving model and PCNs. And as of, at the end of last week, we'd done 23 care homes, but it's ongoing at the rate. So then Shade has mentioned the numbers, 19,000 to date and hopefully 24,000 next week if all goes well.
Thank you very much, Jackie, you've indicated.
Yes, thank you, Chairman, it may be too early for anyone to say or is not known yet. But I guess get a feeling that the smaller practices with one or two GPs and perhaps one practice nurse may be well down the, the kind of waiting list for getting their populations vaccinated. Are they going to be part of a network of vaccination with bigger centres in which they are part of? Or how are their populations going to be served? Certainly if you compare Dordon Large Practice, which has been part of the Coles Hill Pfizer Vaccine Initiative and has been getting people to come, compared with the smaller practice in Atherton, which has, I think, just got one or two GPs. I'm just concerned that there may be some populations that are perhaps going to get left behind because the infrastructure for delivery is not going to embrace these smaller units of delivery.
Yeah, so as of next week, we should have 20, 20 local vaccination sites in total and that will cover every bit of area. So every, even small practice will be part of one of those. But it's the, by the time we've got all 20, it's the end of next week we're looking for, subject to sign off.
Thank you, Adrian, thank you very much. Chris Bane?
Yeah, thank you, Chair, happy new year, everybody. Just quickly, the vaccinations in care homes, if the care home has been covered by vaccination, does that mean the restrictions on visiting will be relaxed in that care home?
That's a question for Chris.
Nigel, you're going to take it?
Yeah, I'll take it. I think not immediately is the short answer to that question. So clearly there is a degree of protection from the first round of vaccination. But of course, there is the second one, which will now be some time further down the line. And then a period after that before people are fully covered. So I think we've probably got to get to that point before the, the rules can be relaxed. Of course, at the moment, while we're in national lockdown, all visiting other than no visit, garden visits are prohibited anyway under the regulations.
Yeah, because that is the sort of question we will be getting. As soon as it becomes clear that the vaccination is being rolled out.
But you still have to protect against outsiders bringing in.
Yeah.
And that's the other big issue, yeah. Nadia, did you want to comment? Sorry. I think, Nadia, did you want to comment?
It's okay, Chair, I don't know if you can hear me, can you hear me okay? No, that's okay, you can't hear me.
We can.
We can hear.
Okay, don't worry, I know Nadia's having trouble with the system.
Sorry, does it really, does it really?
No, don't, don't worry, Nadia. We'll move on, Sally Bragg?
Hello, yes, it might not be appropriate, but obviously I know GPs are focusing on the over 80s. And I've been contacted by somebody who's 99 and a half and they haven't been invited for their vaccination. Has the GP's been given some directive how they contact the over 80s? Because given a lot of them are not mobile phone or email users. Have they been given a directive to either write to them or to phone them up? Because obviously I'm trying to chase the surgery on his behalf, but getting through to a GP at the moment is rather difficult.
I don't know, Adrian, are you able to help on that one?
I don't know, I mean, I know they will contact them all, I don't know what the directive is for them to do that, but I'm happy to follow it up and send something back in about how that will happen.
Okay, thank you.
I'll leave you to send an email to Adrian, Sally, and then you can do it offline, that'll be brilliant, thanks Adrian. Okay, if we could move on then to data and intelligence and I think Duncan's doing that.
Yes, thank you, Chair. So I was going to talk you through a couple of pages from the CSW dashboard and give a bit of commentary. Like Nadia, I think my internet's been a bit intermittent. So what I've done is I've just copied it into a slide, a couple of screenshots into a slide set which I'll share. Just, I was trying to present some of the data of Rugby IMT earlier unsuccessfully, so if you just bear with me, I shall find my backup slide set which are on my plan A. So obviously I think there has been a lot of discussion over Christmas and, you know, about what impact that Christmas period will have. And of course, I understand members want to be aware of all of that. And I don't think we've fully seen everything filtered through as yet, given the three days, you know, at least delay in testing turnaround time. So this is, I think, some of our initial observations from that period between Christmas and New Year that we are able to make comments on. Just to give a bit of a sense of what that change in that shift has been. So this is the epidemic for Rugby. And as you can see, of course, we did see, you can see the shape of the second lockdown in November, you know, where we had a higher 313 cases just prior to it. And then, you know, decreasing numbers to the start of December. And at that point, obviously, numbers started to pick up again. You'll have heard obviously in the announcement yesterday where the Prime Minister mentioned the 29th of December as a particularly bad day nationally. And that's echoed in Warwickshire where we had 556 cases test positive in a, in a single day. And obviously that's had a big, a big impact in the overall trends and the overall numbers and sort of very much making up for the, for the drop in the numbers of people accessing testing and testing positive on, on Christmas Day and Boxing Day. Just in reference to the question earlier about, you know, how many people have, have had it? And I appreciate this only refers to people who have tested positive and who we've confirmed that they are a case. And you can see obviously there's around 20,000 there, so that's around one in 30 people in Warwickshire. One of the challenges with working this out and, you know, the ONS survey started in May. So I think, you know, whichever data source we look at, there is a gap in March. But I'll take it away as an item to sort of think for and reflect about how we might be able to calculate that. But obviously you see about that sort of one in 30 there. And, you know, some of those numbers particularly high and sort of likely to, to increase. In terms of how we, how we benchmark against the rest of the West Midlands, and again, I've sort of drawn this out. And you can see Warwickshire, they're just sort of around two thirds of the way down. So just sort of our rates per 100,000 are slightly higher than, you know, Stoke-on-Trent, about on a pile with Worcestershire, obviously a sort of, you know, one of our statistical labours there. And but you'll see obviously there are some areas in the West Midlands with sort of much higher numbers, particularly Wolverhampton, which has got sort of a rate of 760. And again, just as I was sort of looking into some of this, you know, you might find it interesting to know that some of the London and local authorities in the South East have sort of rates of around 1,200. So, so again, some areas are sort of greatly impacted by the later strain and the increase in numbers that we've seen over, over September. It's not to say, you know, there are some areas within the West Midlands which have lower numbers and sort of highlighting just that sort of Shropshire and sort of Hereford as examples of that. But, but obviously sort of very different counties, sort of economically and geographically. In terms of the rates and sort of the differences between each of the districts and boroughs, and again, this is a bit of a, perhaps there's one too many lines on this graph. But hopefully you can make out the different trends in each of the lower tier local authority areas. You can see Stratford-on-Avon has again been sort of one of the areas where we have seen lower numbers across the whole county. But obviously, you know, this, this increase and this uptick over the last couple of days, this graph finishes on January the 1st. You know, you can see that, you know, a sharp and steady increase there in Stratford-on-Avon even. It's been something that's across all of our districts and boroughs. You'll note that Rugby has also had a decrease just prior to Christmas before sort of rejoining the national trend. And, you know, at one point in December Rugby was the highest within, you know, Warwickshire in terms of numbers. And actually sort of quite high in terms of the West Midlands as a whole, you know, sort of similarly close to the top along with Stoke-on-Trent. And we think sort of that was driven particularly by a couple of school outbreaks that we were aware of, which happened around the same point as some, some care home outbreaks. So that, that sort of influenced the rugby trends. And actually, once schools were shut and the outbreaks were more under control, we saw the numbers drop down before, you know, the overall national trend rejoining the rate there. But as you can see, you know, it still had a lasting impact on rugby, which is now sort of the area with the highest rates alongside Nun Eaton and Bedworth in Warwickshire. Now, this increase in numbers of cases isn't because of an increased numbers of tests and, and, you know, the PCR tests. And that's what I really wanted to make the point on this graph. It's, you know, because the tests that are happening are picking up more people. And you can see across all of Warwickshire, there's been a sort of a slow and steady increase in numbers of people accessing PCR tests, you know, the ones for symptomatic individuals. And actually, you can see over the last couple of days between Christmas, you know, between Christmas and New Year, you know, there was a decrease in the number of tests. And the impact of that is a greater proportion of tests coming back positive. And you can see that, you know, there's some, you know, now across all of our PCR tests, around 15% of them are coming back positive. So, you know, that's, that's a very different situation to what we were seeing even, you know, at the height of the, the sort of what we, I think we would call the second wave in November. And the sort of 1% in, through, through the summer. Again, there are some differences by age groups and sort of again, looking at it, perhaps the, you know, the positivity is slightly higher in sort of younger age groups and younger 18-year-olds. And I think, you know, there's a point there about how we encourage younger people to access testing when they have symptoms. To have a look at some of the different age groups that we see, you know, and over 60 rates are obviously one of the things that the government had said that they were looking at as part of the previous. that they were looking at as part of the previous COVID plan over the winter. And you can see there are, you know, it sort of mirrors quite closely the overall case rates. So when there's more community spread, there are more over 60 year olds being, becoming infected. And again, that data, the 29th, particularly bad with 115 testing positive across all of Warwickshire. I also wanted to make a point about children's. And again, there's a few things to highlight here. I mean, the red bars are the five to nine year olds and the green bars are the 10 to 14 year olds. They're stacked, so they're on top of each other. So you see the total numbers for all of those age groups. And you can see how numbers increased throughout sort of September, October, November and sort of built and built, decreased during the second lockdown. And again, you know, obviously decreased when schools were shut over Christmas and particularly see that in the 0 to 5 year olds. But again, it does show the impact of the school closures on case numbers in this age group earlier on. And, you know, if you look sort of earlier on in the epidemic and in terms of, you know, when it was, when schools were shut over Christmas. So I think, you know, there's hopefully some of the, you know, the lockdown will reflect itself in some of these numbers that we see. Some other separate bits of analysis what we've done is sort of really indicated actually, the working age population is sort of where we're seeing some of the fastest increases in numbers and particularly, you know, what I would say the upper end of that. So, you know, so not necessarily your 18 to sort of 30 year olds, but sort of potentially sort of older than that. You can see, again, this is a stacked bar chart. And again, you can see how numbers have increased, particularly in between Christmas and New Year and sort of quite dramatic and large increases. A greater proportion of increase than what we saw in some of the other age groups. So again, I feel that this will be the one to watch and the one to sort of make sure that we're sort of bringing under control. And again, some of the points about, you know, what we can do for key workers and people who are unavoidably in drawing this lockdown will be quite important therefore. Just before I move on to deaths, I will make another point on this. We, as I realise, you'll be interested to understand the impact of Christmas and it is something that is still coming through our data. We have been tracking the proportion for each case identified in Warwickshire, you know, the proportion of contacts they identified, who are as a result of household visitors or visiting someone else's household. And we have seen, again, we've got some of earlier indication of that over the Christmas period, but there was an increase in the proportion of contacts being identified from that. So again, I think, you know, that, that sort of, that sort of greater interaction between families has come through in some of our contacts data. And as we sort of often see, you know, there's the risk that that then comes through later in the case data. So I think we, given that, I think we might expect to see, you know, trends go upwards for a little bit longer before the results of the lockdown kick in. And then just finally to highlight the sort of the deaths figure. And again, you know, we've seen much lower deaths recently in this wave than we have seen in the first wave. However, that's not to say that there hasn't been a significant increase of deaths from COVID across Warwickshire. And I think, you know, you see lower numbers in both hospitals and care homes, care homes in blue and hospitals in purple, that is sort of purply pink. But obviously, I would say that this is before, I think, we've started to see the impact of, you know, some of the new variants and sort of impacting through care homes. And again, there is always a time delay on this. So I think, you know, we will sadly see this increasing and over the next couple of weeks again, before the impact of the lockdown and this starts to, you know, starts to have an impact on deaths. And again, a similar point made by the Prime Minister last night. So I think that's the sort of the highlights that I just wanted to talk through. I will just mention geographically across Warwickshire. We have, again, previously where you've sort of been given an indication of areas with highest numbers, again, that sort of remains fairly, fairly steady. So again, we've seen higher numbers in Leamington. We see higher numbers across, you know, most of Nuneaton and Bedworth comparatively, you know, particularly Bedworth. And again, rugby, that increase that we saw in December had filtered through. So some wards in rugby also, you know, including Cooton and Bilton, Admirals and Cawston and Tumsmore also seeing higher, higher numbers as well. So geographically, that's how it's sort of spread. Against Stratford-on-Avon, we see sort of lower numbers compared to the rest of Warwickshire again, you know, geographically. You know, there's not really a sort of a geographic focal point in the same way that there is in some of the other districts and boroughs.
Thank you. Very, very useful. We've got some mics on, so we can wake as we're getting some echoes. Jackie.
Yeah, thank you. That was a really helpful presentation and a huge amount of work must have gone in into that. And I found your, your intelligence about the contacts that happened over Christmas, you know. Well, it's a serious, serious potential rise that we're going to see as a result of that. Locally, one's impression is that people have tried to be extremely careful and that Christmas has been a very different affair in terms of household mixing to what they would normally have had. But my question really is around the death data and the crisis that apparently is looming in our hospitals. And certainly, you know, what threat level five, the Prime Minister said threatens to overwhelm our NHS. I just wonder whether locally we know the extent to which this crisis is as a result of fewer people dying, which clearly your curve illustrates very well in terms of number of deaths compared with the previous surge. So more people are surviving, but obviously they're staying in hospitals. And is that the main reason that we're seeing this problem of capacity in our hospitals as well as the double running or attempted double running along with elective care? It's just we don't, we don't seem to get a behind the scenes understanding of, is it the hospitals are filling up and keeping people longer? Or is it that more people are coming in and at the same time, they're trying to double run and keep social distancing and all the other things that have come in in terms of moving people through the system? And I just wonder whether we have any understanding of that, that kind of, you know, consequence of this pandemic in terms of the workload on our hospitals behind the scenes in terms of that crisis.
Duncan, can you answer that? Hi, Emily. Thanks for joining us.
Yeah, it's a good question. I don't have, I don't have some of the data on discharges to hand. So much in the same way how in the first, you know, in the first wave, we were monitoring quite closely the sort of numbers out of hospitals as well as numbers in. And that's something that we've not included in this piece of analysis. But of course, I can, you know, it's something that should be able to access and could sort of have a look at and then feed back to the board. I mean, I would obviously say, you know, obviously, an intensive case care stay is quite often a long one and therefore, you know, and sort of generally lower numbers. So, you know, that's, that's where there is an area of an element of risk for trusts. In terms of discharges, as I say, I'll have to go away and look that data up for you.
That's, that's, that's fine, Duncan. But it does highlight the quality of the data we have in Warwickshire. And thanks to everybody that's keeping that and putting it together for us. It really puts us in a strong position. Thanks very much. Anything else on this? Emily, were you speaking on this one as well or? That's fine. Thank you. Any other queries for Duncan? No, I can see no hands up. Thank you very much, Duncan. Great to have you aboard. So Nadia, local incidents and outbreaks. I know you've put a message up, but let's see how you're, we've got any more success.
Okay. Can you hear me at all at the moment?
Yes.
You can. Okay. So I'll give it a go and see if you can. And colleagues might, might be chipping as well. In terms of incidents and outbreaks, I think it's fair to say that they've gone up fairly quickly.
Nadia, somebody suggested you turn your camera off. Just use force.
On Christmas Day and Boxing Day, but after that.
No, it's not working, Nadia. Nadia, it's not, it's not working.
Large number of things come through as well. I think more cases. And colleagues will be able to fill you in anyway because they've been on over, they've been on over Christmas.
Okay. Duncan or Emily, are you going to just pick this up and update us?
Yeah, no problem. I think Nadia was really just summarising. We had a busy period on call over the festive season, largely supporting care homes, where sadly we have seen a number of outbreaks within those settings. So we don't have the full normal table for you today. But because we were kind of on that on-call mode, unfortunately, we've had a couple of very large care home outbreaks and what appears to be some very rapid spread. So the advice really to those settings and all settings is to be extra vigilant around all the usual prevention measures. So meticulous cleaning, hand hygiene, face coverings, PPE use and all of those measures around keeping space, extra space between contacts and, but just reducing contacts as much as possible. So really trying to reduce activity. From a workplace perspective, we have seen a number of what we call clusters. So that's where we see a number of cases in a workplace setting, but we don't believe there has been transmission in the workplace. So it seems to have been more community transmission that we happen to be seeing within workforces, if that makes sense. We have had a small number of outbreaks in workplace settings and some of those are linked with, well, have been seen really amongst employees that we have challenged whether they really need to be coming into the workplace. So some office staff who previously the companies had determined they needed to come in and couldn't work from home. But after having an outbreak, they will be moving to working from home. So just pushing a really strong message to our local businesses now about getting everybody working at home where it's feasibly possible. Obviously, with the concerns around the new variant and increased transmissibility, we just really need to be, as I say, reducing all contacts as much as possible.
Adrian, did you want to come in?
No, no.
No, thank you. Any queries on local outbreaks? Jackie.
Yeah, thank you, Emily. I just wonder, are these outbreaks in care homes that have happened and their origins? Were any of these care homes using lateral flow tests as a routine in terms of both staff or visitors? And, you know, and is there any concerns from your end that, that the kind of backup of the results of these tests is not coming through quickly enough in terms of PCR validation? Is there any cause for concern, I guess, in terms of continued use of these tests of screening either staff or visitors?
I mean, I'm not as close to the care home testing as other colleagues are. As I recall, it's the weekly lateral flow test for staff and monthly for residents. If they do have cases, then they will do a week of doing lateral flow tests with their staff. We have got a local outbreak response service and a local service that will go into care settings to do proper swabs. So if they've had a couple of case, positive cases from LFTs, they can send their staff through the pillar two, the kind of normal route for getting a PCR test. But we did see some delays in getting those results through. So we have been leaning on Arlie Medical Service to come in and do testing within, within care homes. And they get their results within 24 hours then. So there have been delays, but we've got a local solution. I think Sade was going to add to that.
Yeah, I was just going to quickly add that the requirement is to start to use lifts for care home testing only came in recently. The weekly testing for staff and the 28 day testing for residents has been premised on PCR testing till recently. So it was just before Christmas that care homes were asked to introduce lift testing for staff before they commenced the shift. But we've been seeing these outbreaks happen before this requirement came in. So this is not about the mode of testing. This is about a fatigue that is not unique to care homes. It is across the board. People forgetting that the pandemic is still with us, not necessarily doing the right things. We conduct IMTs with these care homes for every outbreak. And the frustration is palpable because they forget that they're not supposed to mix. They forget about PPE. There's lots of PPE breaches. Many of them do not do the right thing. And that is why we're seeing these increases, not necessarily having anything to do with increased testing due to lifts.
Thank you. Thank you, Sade.
I think a couple of the recent care home outbreaks as well, we've had concerns that it may well be the new variant, just the, how rapidly it spreads through the settings, really. I think it is likely to be that.
Thank you. Thank you, Sade. Any other, any other queries on, on local incidents and outbreaks? I've got no more hands up. And Nadia has put one or two bits of information on the chat room, so people can look at that, supporting exactly what has been said. So we can move on to Jane's communications update, please.
Hello, Chair. Happy New Year to everybody. So we had plenty of communications ready to go out and I circulated to you as we moved into tier four. And then, of course, it all changed again. So we've had some communications going out, just letting people know what they can and can't do under the new national lockdown measures. But I just wanted to touch, I guess, as much for reassurance, Chair, as anything else, but some of the key strands of our comms activity moving forwards. So first of all, those people who are most vulnerable, the clinically extremely vulnerable, reminding them that help and support is available. And we've actually got a radio campaign running at the moment featuring the hotline. And that was in direct response to some comments that came out of this group about making sure that we have sufficient, what I call offline, out of home promotion. So not just relying on social media and emails and websites. We're also very mindful of vulnerable families. So we will be putting together some promotional material, reminding people that additional support is available. And we've actually had a very successful rollout of the, our equivalent of the free school meals through our welfare scheme. But we are still able to support vulnerable families through that as well. School pupils, making sure that people understand the requirement to engage in remote learning. So schools, the buildings may be closed to most pupils, but learning is still very much in action. And also reminding people that early years settings will actually remain open. In terms of businesses, it's vital that we continue with the messaging around opening in a COVID safe manner. So encouraging businesses to take every possible precaution and step to be COVID safe. One of the big things that we know that is going to be an even greater issue now is that of the mental health and wellbeing of people. This is another blow, albeit some people may have expected it, but this is going to be a difficult time for everybody. So you'll see a lot of information coming out from us and also sent to you and asking you to share around the five ways to mental health and wellbeing. So things like connecting with other people, being very aware of the present mindfulness, physical activity and so on. And I'll be sharing those in the usual weekly packs. And then finally, I just wanted to mention children and in particular vulnerable children. So we'll be putting out quite a lot of messaging around childcare bubbles, exactly what they are, what they mean, how you do them, who you can, how you can use them. And reminding people that FIS can assist with childcare provision. Reminding people to keep their eyes open if they see something unusual and that MASH is still there to whom people can report any concerns around children and young people. And the other thing that came out, excuse me, was during the first lockdown, we saw a significant increase in accidents in the home. So we will be doing quite a lot of work around promoting home safety.
Okay, thank you. Nadia, if you have your hand up, is it a historical one? Sorry, Sade, your hand is up. Sorry, not Nadia. Do you want to comment? Did you want to comment?
That's an old one. I can't get off mute.
Don't worry, don't worry. Judy, Judy, it's your turn.
The only group you didn't mention, which I've always got a concern about is people suffering from domestic violence. I read somewhere that there's a big increase again over Christmas. I know it's more difficult to get to, you know, the control is such in some families that, you know, they only watch what they're told to watch. But that, that is a big concern for me with another lockdown, that domestic violence is, will, will increase again even more. So if we can do anything for, to help with that, I'd be grateful.
Absolutely. And I should have mentioned that particular group. We've had a campaign running across Christmas and New Year, being aware that it's a time of significant increase anyway. But when you compound it with the impact of significant additional title rules and now with lockdown, we know that it is a real issue. And in fact, when we're talking about what people can and can't do under new lockdown rules, we will always make the point that you can leave your home if it is to escape domestic abuse and domestic violence. So thank you for that.
Okay. Any other queries? Jo, I know you've joined us late. Are you any, we're in public session, don't forget. Have you any particular questions you wanted to ask? Though we don't want to reinvent the meeting.
No, I haven't, but thank you very much. I'm sure if there was anything from our end, Robert would have asked. So thank you.
Thanks, Jo. Okay, there's a query from Chris Bane about dentists, but Adrian's going to follow it up with the CCG, so that's fine. Certainly I've got a routine checkup this week that's still being honoured, so hopefully we move forward. Any other items of business anyone wishes to raise? Emily?
I thought I'd give a brief update around some of the community engagement activity.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I've mentioned before our COVID-19 Community Champions courses that we've been running. So we've completed three successfully now and the fourth one will be starting next week. So it's just really, I find it really rewarding to be talking to members of the community that are so willing to be proactive in their local areas to help get appropriate messages out. And we've also, the planning for the Young Persons Champions course is going well, but obviously sensitivities around the support, the kind of work that we ask young people to take on board. So we're just going carefully on, on that one. We've recently commissioned or approved funding for a theatre project which will engage with young people around their experiences of the pandemic as a way to kind of capture and share their experiences. And we're planning some work around engaging on, engaging with people from black and minority ethnic groups around the mental health impact and how they've experienced it and how they may access support for mental health and wellbeing. Two minutes please Max. And then we are presenting the full findings of our COVID-19 survey that we conducted August, September last year. That's been presented to the Health and Wellbeing Board tomorrow. But I just wanted to give a few snapshot findings really, because I think it'd be really useful taking on board some of the findings from the previous lockdown, particularly around how people coped with it, obviously as we move into the third lockdown. So broadly, a lot of people reported engaging in healthy behaviours to help cope with the pandemic. So taking time to relax and connect with others and in trying to engage in physical activity, getting plenty of sleep and avoiding alcohol and drugs and overeating. But we did find that around 20% of people did report increasing alcohol consumption, similar amount around increasing sugary and fatty foods. And around one in three generally reporting kind of overeating or increased eating. We found that participants who reported having pre-existing mental health conditions were three times more likely to have increased smoking during the lockdown. And women were 2.4 times more likely to have increased their high fat or sugar consumption. And participants from black and minority ethnic groups were, were twice as likely to have increased kind of comfort eating. However, there were some positive findings in terms of the activities that can help to mediate the impacts on wellbeing and loneliness. So we know that people did report particularly COVID stresses impacting on wellbeing, so reducing wellbeing and increasing loneliness. But those that engaged in healthy behaviours have more of an increase in wellbeing, taking time to relax increased wellbeing. Increasing alcohol eating or those high fat and sugars did decrease wellbeing. And Coventry University have done some good analysis to kind of help us identify and quantify that impact. But interestingly as well, helping others came out as something that could help mediate the negative impacts of the lockdown. So it helped to reduce feelings of loneliness and increase feelings of wellbeing differed by age group and a higher impact in older adults that were helping others out and less so in younger people. But I think that's a really important one going forward that we need to communicate and really encourage people, as I know they are in communities, around helping others out. We also acted on some early finding or acted early on findings around people not being too confident around knowing how to get a test. So I know Jane's team have picked that up in making sure all of our comms really do highlight the, the web link and the 119 phone number in terms of accessing tests. And that was particularly higher in older people. So really pleased that we've got the, the kind of physical comms resources going out as well as the digital. That was it from me. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you Emily. Are we going to do a comms release on this chain? We could put something together? When, when it's been through the board tomorrow?
On which particular aspect?
On, on, on the survey.
Yes.
On the overall view. That, that, that would be good because it gives a bit of support to, to. And the other thing, Emily, I put a teenage young girl in touch with you who wanted to help. I've had a response back saying she's helped and hoping to bring some more friends with her and do, do more. So well done. Thanks for that. And again, Jane, probably we need to talk about whether we can put a press release out of that, but we can do that offline. Because it's great that we've got you just volunteering and we're actually using them and, you know, it's good.
It's really positive. Yeah. Thanks for that link, Les.
Yeah, thanks Emily. Any other, any queries on, on that for Emily or any other business anyone wishes to raise? No. Well, those that are members of the Health and Wellbeing Board will see you, see you tomorrow, tomorrow afternoon. And that will be a broadcast meeting for anybody that wants to, to listen in. And I'm also chairing the mental health meeting tomorrow morning for members if you're going to be, to be there. So thank you all very much for today. Very useful. And the date of our next meeting is the 17th of February and that will be our members only confidential meeting. Thank you all very much and see you next time.